I don't think we've ever done that.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. Want to begin by acknowledging that we are on Treaty One territory and the national homeland of the Red River Maiti. I want to begin today by expressing my deep appreciation to the Chairman of our Standing Policy Committee on Finance and our Budget Lead, Councillor Geoff Brawdy. The 2025 preliminary budget update process has been an extremely difficult task, and Councillor Brawdy has shown consistent, strong, and steady leadership throughout this process to get us to a balanced budget today. I also want to thank the Budget Working Group Councillors, Councillors Matt Allard and Evan Duncan, for their countless hours of effort and work on the budget. I also acknowledge our Chief Financial Officer, Tracy, and her team of Lisa, Tammy, Judy, and the entire Corporate Finance Team, as well as support staff from my office and from various city department offices. In a moment, Councillor Brawdy is going to walk you through some of the highlights of the 2025 Preliminary Balanced Budget Update. He'll walk you through some of those highlights in specific detail. But I want to take a moment today to frame really the bigger picture and talk about what this budget means for the citizens of Winnipeg. The 2025 Preliminary Balanced Budget Update focuses on what we have heard loud and clear from Winnipeg residents. They want a safer city with better roads. They want community safety and infrastructure to be prioritized. Winnipegers want their potholes fixed and the roads repaired. They want buses to arrive on time. They want our parks to be safe, free of needles and knives, and they want to know that if they call 911, help will arrive quickly. This budget delivers on those priorities by investing in safer neighborhoods and better roads. It also takes steps to tackle some of the larger financial risks that we face, like years of underfunding essential services and the need to begin to rebuild and replenish the Financial Stabilization Reserve so that we are prepared for the next emergency. One thing I am proud of is that this budget takes a whole-of-city approach. It's not about dividing small pots of new money to make sure every ward gets a little bit of something, as we have done in several recent budgets. The 2025 Balanced Budget Update is about looking at the larger picture, the big picture, and making key investments that benefit all Winnipegers. This is about building a Winnipeg that works for a growing population and not just maintaining the status quo. Now, I know there'll be a lot of talk about the proposed 5.9% property tax increase. Yes, it's higher than we've seen in recent years, and it will mean an extra $10 per month over the next year for the owner of the typical home. But let's put that into perspective. In recent years across Canada, cities have been raising taxes by 8%, 9%, or even higher to keep up with growth. Here in Manitoba, the city of Brandon raised property taxes by 9.4% last year and is looking at a similar increase for 2025. Why is this happening? Because cities everywhere have aging infrastructure and are growing faster than their revenues. When I ran for mayor, I was upfront with Winnipegers. I said we needed to raise taxes modestly, and I set a target of 3.5% per year. And also in my platform, I said that Winnipeg needs a new and better funding deal from the province of Manitoba. But since then, some things have changed. Winnipeg's population has grown by 65,000 people since 2021, far more than was predicted, and this has put increased pressure on the demand for city services. Inflation has been much higher than anyone predicted, even the Bank of Canada, and despite efforts with two provincial governments, we still do not have a new financial deal from the province of Manitoba. Now, I want to acknowledge Premier Canoe and his government. We have a strong working relationship. We meet regularly. In fact, just yesterday, the Premier and I had breakfast together with Minister Smith to talk about the next steps in tackling homelessness. We're on the same page on a lot of big issues like tackling homelessness. Both, all of us, all three of us, want to move faster on that file and turn plans into action. The province has also committed to the North End Wastewater Treatment Plant expansion, and we're working together to bring the federal government on board to get that project moving and to get it fully funded. And I appreciate the province's recent announcement, about a recent funding announcement. It will help with balancing this year's budget, but it's not growth revenue. If we added another 65,000 people to Winnipeg's population tomorrow, the city would not see any additional revenues from that growth to cover the costs of the city's services related to those new residents. That's why this year, we've had to make the difficult, but I believe responsible decision to raise more of our own revenue through a modest property tax increase of about $10 per month for the typical homeowner. But if you'll permit me and just turn your attention, please, to the TV screen, even with this proposed property tax increase, Winnipeg will still be the most affordable major city in Canada. And it's not just us saying that. I'll point you to a slide deck from the city of Calgary's budget presentation this year. This is taken right from Calgary. Thank you, Calgary, for this. It shows Winnipeg with the lowest taxes in Canada for a typical home. Even when you combine property taxes, utilities, and services, Winnipeg is still the most affordable place to live of any major city in Canada. Compared to cities like Edmonton, Ottawa, and Vancouver, we collect about half as much property tax per resident. If Winnipeg taxed at the same rate as those cities, we would have an extra $700 million to property tax revenue every year. And finally, if we just look at this term of office, and you look at the combined property tax increases across Canada since the start of this term of council, you'll see Winnipeg is significantly lower than most cities across our nation. For 25 years, Winnipeg has been keeping property taxes low, much lower than comparable cities. That won't change, even with this increase. But the 2025 Balanced Budget Update does not just rely solely on more revenue. It directs the city's Chief Financial Officer to focus on controlling expenses, something she had already brought forward to me in this budget process. She said, "There's things that we can do. I'm going to work on them this coming year." One of the things is ongoing continuous improvement initiatives with a target of achieving $51 million in savings throughout this coming year. In addition, the CFO is being asked to conduct a comprehensive review of high-cost departments to identify areas for inefficiency and improvements. Further, we are establishing a budget management group that will meet regularly throughout the year in an effort to control budget costs and identify savings that will assist us in future budgets. The 2025 Preliminary Balanced Budget Update is about investing in Winnipeg's basic services to provide safer communities and better roads. It's about fixing what is broken, preparing for what's next to keep Winnipeg affordable, safe, and ready for the future. I'll now turn it over to our Finance Chair, Councillor Geoff Brawdy, for more details on this year's budget.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to share with you some of the details of the 2025 budget. This update is the product of many months of work with the Budget Working Group, and I'd like to particularly thank my colleagues, Councillor Matt Allard, Councillor Evan Duncan, as well as our CFO, Tracy Graham, and her team for all of their contributions. As the mayor mentioned, this budget focuses on what Winnipegers have told us they need most: safer neighborhoods, better roads, and responsible financial planning. It's a forward-looking plan that addresses today's challenges while preparing for the future. One thing this budget is not about is service cuts. Winnipegers have been clear. They want us to invest in services for a growing city, not scale them back. I believe most of city council shares this view. That's why there are no cuts to services in this budget. No facilities will be closing, and the Community Grants Program has been fully restored, reflecting the direction of council. First and foremost, this budget invests in public safety. With our population growing rapidly and new pressures on first responders, we're stepping up. We're adding 36 new police officers over the next two years with more patrol cars to improve community safety. We're hiring 15 new community safety officers to make Winnipeg transit safer for everyone. We're adding 24 new firefighters funded by the province of Manitoba, and we're upgrading our firefighting equipment with new trucks to meet increasing service demands. These investments aren't just about responding to emergencies. They're about preparing and giving people the confidence that help will be available when they need it. We're also looking at proactive measures to improve community safety, like $1 million in new recreational programs in high-needs neighborhoods. This funding gives kids positive outlets and helps address some of the root causes of crime. Fixing roads continues to be a top priority for me, and I know for all Winnipegers. This budget reflects that. We're making an historic $1 billion in street renewal over the next six years with $169.3 million for 2025 alone. That's a 15.8% increase over last year, and we will make a real difference in mobility, safety, and quality of life. On transit, we're increasing the city's operating subsidy to a record $124 million. I was getting ready to roll out our new citywide transit network next summer. These changes will make public safety transit more efficient, reliable, and user-friendly. There may be an opportunity for some people who have never used transit before to go on a bus, and for even those people who don't use transit, when other people get on the bus, that makes the roads clearer for everybody else. And our friends in the cycling community, we are spending more on active transportation and road safety measures as well. This budget also addresses the financial challenges we're facing. Inflation, rising service costs, and lingering impacts from the pandemic have left us in a tough spot. To manage these risks, we're making steps like starting to rebuild the Fiscal Stabilization Reserve so we're prepared for emergencies, renewing the focus on our continuous improvement process to find savings year-round. Another exciting change is the creation of a budget management team. This team, which includes members of the Budget Working Group, will continue meeting into 2025 to look for efficiencies outside the typical budget process. Why is this important? Because the budget process shouldn't stop after it's approved. Costs and priorities shift throughout the year, and having a dedicated team focused on managing those challenges will help us stay nimble and proactive. One of the directions in this budget motion is to start working with our staff and working with the province and public sector buying groups to leverage bulk discounts and achieve operational efficiencies. This kind of ongoing oversight will ensure we're making the most out of every dollar without compromising the services Winnipegers rely on. I think anyone familiar with my time on council knows I've always been a consistent voice for holding the line on taxes and finding savings wherever possible. But the reality is clear. The service demands and financial risks facing Winnipeg right now require additional revenue. We need to invest in our city, not just to maintain what we have, but to ensure Winnipeg is ready for the future. Yes, there is a property tax increase, 5.95%, but let's put that in perspective. For the typical household, it's about $10 a month. Even with this increase, Winnipeg will still have the lowest property taxes of any major city in Canada. That's a fact we can be proud of as we balance affordability with the investments our city needs to grow and thrive. In short, this budget invests in safer neighborhoods, better infrastructure, and more sustainable finances. It's balanced, it's responsible, and it's focused on what matters most to Winnipegers. I heard a question already? Yep?
How are we defining typical household?
The assessed value is, I think, around $371,000. Let me just get the exact number.
There's a slide, I don't know if the staff went over, but there is a slide in the slide deck. It's a consistent metric that has been used in previous budgets. Our Assessment and Taxation Department identifies what they deem as a typical household. It's consistent year over year. Councillor Brawdy?
Yeah, so this is page 49 of the operating budget document. In 2024, so this is assessed, I got the number right, 371,000 municipal property taxes in 2024 were $2,036. In 2025, that works out to $2,157, a change of $121. So...
Right. That's a sample, but if you look at some of the suburban neighborhoods, Bridgewater, Charleswood, that assessed value is double that. So that typical household, instead of seeing $120 a year, councillor, are they saying 240, 250? Will we see some people as high as $400 a year?
It'll depend on the assessed value. I mean, if you're assessed at half that amount, the increase will be, half of that, it'll be $60. If you're living in a over $750,000 home, then yes, it'll be approximately double, but it'll be obviously sliding based on the assessed value.
Why don't you just give us a mean or median versus a typical, which is a subjective measure?
Yeah, I've asked that question in the past. To me, like, there's about 200,000 single-family homes. Like, take the median house around House 100,000. It's probably, this may be slightly low, but it's probably fairly representative.
And I do this, not to beat anybody up here, but what happens is that people will come back to us and say, "Well, wait a minute, that's not my bill," et cetera, right? And so, you know, the sample here is fine for an inner-city house, we get that, but you've got so many other homeowners that are going to go, "Okay, mayor is saying $10 a month on a typical house." And then, you know, turn to page 69, and that's a bungalow that, yeah, some people can identify, but not all people can identify with at all. So in some cases, I think, you know, in some cases, this is going to be a significant tax increase if you are not your typical house, but you are somebody that owns a 400, or 500, or $600,000 assessed value home in this city. Fair?
Again, it's all based on the assessed values. So, I mean, the house I live in is assessed at an amount that's higher than this, so I'll be paying a little bit more. So maybe it's 150, 160 a year. Yes, it will be more for some folks, but generally, if you live in a more expensive house, you have more income and more ability to pay.
Mr. Mayor, how are you going to sell this pilot project on snow to Winnipegers? People are going to have differing views, I mean, on it. Some people don't care if their streets plowed and it saves the city money, but we know how other people feel, so how are you going to sell that?
First of all, Geoff, I appreciate you identify. It's a pilot project, so I want to be clear that we have not changed the service standard for snow clearing permanently. This is a pilot project. We bear in mind, part of what we're looking at, twofold, is first of all, the costs of snow clearing contracts have really escalated in the last couple of years. I can't remember, Councillor Brawdy, is it 25% increase this year, I think, in contracts that came in as far as costs? But they've jumped considerably. Couple that with our conversations, there's certainly Councillor Luke's conversation with some of the snow clearing contractors who indicate, now, these are, you know, words through her, is that going from a 10-centimeter snow clear, if you're clearing at 10 centimeters and moving it to 15, probably won't make that much difference for many streets. That remains to be seen. That's why we want to run a pilot project. Let's run the pilot project through the winter of '25 and '26 and determine whether or not there's any savings. Estimates are there could be the savings of what is equivalent to one citywide snow clearing cost per year. I've asked for that number. I don't have the latest number on that. So there could be the savings of approximately one snow clear a year based on snowfall amounts over the last several years. But we'll see whether that, whether, after the pilot project, whether we need to change the service level or not. So I would say to Winnipegers, please be patient. We want to provide good service to the citizens of Winnipeg. We also want to be responsible as well. So we're going to run a pilot project. If it works great and the feedback comes back positive, then we'll look at the next steps of identifying maybe changes to the policy. If it doesn't, well, we'll have that information too, but this is just a pilot project. It's not a permanent change in service level.
Don't you think Winnipeg should see that as a service cut, though? Because come next winter, if there's even one last residential plowing operation, that makes a huge difference to people getting out of their houses and getting to main routes.
No, because we're telling you it is not a change. We are not adopting a new service level for snow clearing. I can't be clear. We're going to run a pilot project to see the impacts of clearing at 15 centimeters rather than 10. I have lived in other Western Canadian cities, one that won't be named. You, I don't remember what the threshold amount was to clear snow. It might have been Saskatoon, but it was already unnamed back in the early '90s. You needed someone on the street, a neighbor that had a four-by-four, to get down the street because they just, I don't know what the threshold amount, it wasn't 15, it was higher than that. So the point of the matter is, we consistently hear we have very good snow clearing service. We still want to have good snow clearing service, but there are times, I believe now is one, to take a look at a pilot project to see whether or not moving to a 15-centimeter snow clearing threshold instead of a 10 will make any significant difference. So I ask for residents' patience. I think they expect us to be good, try to be good stewards of our policy and finances, and so let's run this pilot project.
Why do you think they accept that now, though, when that's come up in operational reviews in the past, and people, the feedback was bad?
Well, then we're...
They really didn't want it.
Then we'll see after the pilot project what the feedback is, whether it's, what the feedback is.
Mayor, you've got $1 billion in infrastructure, yet you still have no decisions, no commitments on the big projects to move this city into the future, that being Keniston, that being Chief Beckwith, that being Arlington. You still don't have cost certainty or complete funding on North End sewage treatment. This is a kind of a stand-pat budget where you still have to go to the taxpayer on this. What's the road ahead on dealing with all these issues for the taxpayer of Winnipeg if you don't get the commitments from the feds and the province? And specifically, what would that mean to our utility rates? Because ultimately, we have to pay for that North End sewage treatment plant. That's not in this budget, but what's ahead for you, sir?
Early in the new year, we will get a rate report update on utility rates. That rate report that we have asked for from our staff would be, on the assumption, we get no incremental funding for the North End plant from senior levels of government. I can tell you, based on just some conversations, it would be a significant increase to water rates, sewer rates, if we don't get additional funding from senior levels of government. But I can also tell you here that one of the very active conversations I'm having, and our staff is having with federal and provincial partners, is about the priority of the North End plant. We have to get that North End plant to accommodate the city's growth in the very near future. We're running out of capacity. So yes, for sure, it's about protecting Lake Winnipeg, absolutely, but it's also just about accommodating the growth of our city. The growth of our city is tied to the city's economy. The economy and the growth of Winnipeg is or should be important to the federal government. I know it is important to the premier. So we are having robust conversations about getting more funding from senior levels of government to assist us with the North End plant funding and thereby, you know, kind of mitigating some of the potential impact of water and sewer rates. So that information is yet to come. It's going to come early in the new year, but we've been clear about that. It would have a significant impact on water and sewer rates if the North End plant does not receive additional funding from senior levels of government.
Are there, are there negotiations going on with the province to scale back its wants and needs as far as being able to meet the regulation that exists, just in case?
That's not at the top of our discussion paper because they have been clear that they're not interested in doing that. The most recent information is that they want the same targets that are in the legislation when it comes to our effluent targets and treatment, but they do understand, the premier has been clear, you know, he said, I know he said publicly, that the North End plant is a priority behind closed doors. I get the same information from him, and he and his team are working with us to try to come up with a solution.
Why are you confident you're going to get some confidence after that you can go back to 3.5% property tax hikes next year? I mean, you're talking about finding, looking for savings, like $50 million, and you're always seeking that new funding formula from the province. How can you be sure? Why are you confident, maybe today anticipate that you can stay? This is a one-time-only...
Yeah, that's the initial, you know, draft budget. It reflects that, going back to the 3.5 next year, but we are, you know, and that's the intention, but the question was just asked about the significant infrastructure projects that we have. This is a really, really difficult decision. I don't take lightly that, you know, for the first time in decades, we have a tax increase at this amount. But I would rather do what I believe the citizens of Winnipeg need for the future than to try to protect myself and ourselves from, you know, from public criticism. We need more revenue, full stop, and we have to continue to control costs, and we're trying to do that. We're going to make every effort to do that. But we're at a point today, with the growth of our city, the demands on our services, the demands on our infrastructure, that we need more revenue, and now, right now, we have to raise it on ourselves.
Can you please explain how the city can operate without a financial safety net next year?
Well, we are, you know, part of what we're doing, obviously, to mitigate some of the risks that a financial safety net would accommodate. Part of what we're doing is identifying those $51 million in savings that we'll be working to find this year. We are going to, the plan is really to use the new funds from the province of Manitoba, the $7.5 million, which doesn't seem like a lot, but put that to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And so, and to put in place, if you see in the budget, you know, the CFO is coming forward with a plan to replenish the Financial Stabilization Reserve...
I thought the $7 million was covering off the deficit for this year.
Well, we'll get each year, right? So as of January 1st? So it says to go into the Financial Stabilization Reserve. One of the things that the Financial Stabilization Reserve this year will be doing is to...
I feel like we're quibbling on, I'm quibbling, but big picture here. It's supposed to be $90 million on a $1.5 million budget, so $88 million or whatever it's supposed to be. There's a whole bunch of risks the city has every year. You mentioned that in the budget. How confident are you that we're going to be able to, we're looking at a year where God knows what could happen from the effects, economic effects of the threatened tariffs to whatever the climate will be, the weather will throw at us. So how can you give Winnipegers the confidence that the city is going to be able to get through a year without a rainy day fund?
Well, a part of what we're doing is bringing forward a plan to replenish that rainy day fund. We are controlling costs. We're raising revenue. We'll continue to work with senior levels of government on assistance and other funding and priorities. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing task. It's an ongoing effort.
Councillor Brawdy, the 24 firefighters, we were told, aren't, they're provincially funded, but they don't have to be used for WAFPS. They could be used elsewhere while, I guess, so is the hope that that could curve over time because we know every year...
The WAFPS, I'll tell you this...
Sure.
...your committee and says, or the Community Service Committee says, "We've got a huge over expenditure, most of it's over time." Are you hoping...
You're right. Yeah, we definitely do hope that the 24 new firefighters will help with that. We also did, in terms of, you know, again, you know, strains on the FSR, the rainy day fund, we did make a couple of changes there as well. Like, this year, we did not ask them to come up with a $3 million savings target. Last year, there's a $3 million savings target. This year, we added in a $3 million recognition that their workers' compensation claims patterns over time have been increasing. So we have reduced some of the risk there to the $6 million when it comes to fire paramedic service, on top of the 24 new firefighters that were provincially funded. So we're hoping those three measures will bring things closer to budget.
And did I read it right? The normal $7 million expenditure management target for the police is significantly down as well, or did I read that wrong? Is that in...
Yeah, I believe it's down by $2 million.
It's down to $5 million.
Yeah, it's down to $5.
Yeah.
No.
Be that, you know, last week, you credited them, they did have a $7 million expenditure management target in 2024, and they were able to hit that.
The $1 million for recreation programs in inner-city neighborhoods, is that all new money? Yes.
Yes, that's new money. And what that million dollars is part of is, there's crime response and some prevention, obviously through an investment in police officers, for more police officers, to increase general patrol, to provide policing services to the citizens of our growing city, but also we want to, we want to invest in young people at the front end. We want to invest in crime prevention and give them opportunities to have good peers, good opportunities, good role models. There's a lot of organizations within the city of Winnipeg that exist right now that are running very important and positive programming for young people. And so part of what this is investing in are young people, investing in crime prevention, and investing in organizations who are giving young people positive role models and, you know, keeping them out of trouble and criminal activity and gang activity. So this is about investing in the front end as well.
So where's the $1 million coming from?
It's part of the property tax increase. Yeah.
And have you identified which... And have you identified which programs that money is going towards?
No, that's part of what the process will be. It's laid out here in one of the recommendations, is that it will be identified, we have a map that's identified the high-needs areas in Winnipeg. So it's about partnering with agencies within those high-needs areas that are running youth programming right now and asking them, okay, if you expand your program, if you're, you know, if you've got a program that's meeting the needs of 50 kids right now, you know, what if, we give you, how much would you need to double that provision to keep more kids, you know, off the street and out of trouble? And so it's about investing in those high-needs areas where young people need positive reinforcement. So that'll come forward later this year, once we have these discussions and work with the councillors in those high-needs areas.
A lot of people across the country are, whether or not they were deeply impacted by inflation or not, but everybody claims that they've been rocked by inflation. I don't see a lot of governments at the provincial and federal level that are rushing to raise taxes. Instead, you know, they're giving away billions of dollars in a panic through tax cuts and rebates. So what concerns do you have about selling this budget into a political environment that where clearly everybody else is saying like, hey, like, we're helping you with affordability? There's, this budget may be a lot of things, but you're not helping with affordability?
A lot of those governments are boring to help with affordability. We can't do that. Senior levels of government can run deficits year after year after year. We can't do that. When you look at cities across Canada,